So if you are here with us in chambers or you're here with us on Zoom and you'd like to offer comment on something that is not on tonight's agenda, we welcome you. Please raise your hand on Zoom, please come forward to the mic, you can line up behind the podium if you'd like, so we know you're there. Standard rules, just give us your name and organization that you represent or the neighborhood that you live in and we'll give you three minutes on the clock and again, thanks for being here. So we've got somebody in chambers to go ahead first.
Hi, everyone. My name is Becca and I live in D1. I'm here today to voice my support for all of our councilors of color, specifically councillor Pelletier, who as we now know is being targeted by white supremacists in the city. I would love to see city leadership show more support for our leaders and for these individuals specifically and take a stronger and more consistent stance against racism throughout the city. To be honest, I'm a little bit apprehensive from what I witnessed so far and not feeling very optimistic, but I would love to be proven wrong. You mentioned making a statement and I just hope we don't end there. To my fellow Portlanders, specifically my other white people, I have to believe that you are equally as appalled by the violent threats, intimidation tactics and racist hate speech being directed at our elected officials. We have to remember that supporting these folks goes way beyond voting. So please make all of our voices heard and because right now, the folks that are making the most noise are the ones that are spewing all the hate and we just, we need to do better. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment and we'll hop over to Zoom, hand up from Dave Aceto.
Thank you very much, Dave Aceto, District 1. Thanks for giving me a moment to speak. There are a number of rules that we follow in society and in government and over time, those rules change. One of the rules this chamber has is that we do not call out community members by name, but surely this rule must be challenged when harm is directed at others. It is through anonymity and suggested meaning that hate finds power in small numbers. And I do think they're small, but they're here. Do we want to be a city that stands by any Tom, Dick or Richard that spews hate and intentionally incites white supremacy? If the answer is no, then let's change the way we deal with these people. Let's name them. Let's name them, no, let's let them know that their rhetoric is not welcome here or anywhere. It cannot be up to black people to stand up for black people and make no mistake, it's okay to be white is in direct opposition to Black Lives Mattering. If you're listening to this, this is your community and it's up to you on how you, especially my fellow white people, it's up to you on how you deal with this. Is it with silent complacency or will the citizens of the city stand up with the global majority who lives in Portland? There will always be work to be done to fight racism in Portland and around the world. If this week was a wake-up call to you, I ask that you don't fall asleep again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we've got somebody here in chambers with us.
Hello, my name is Aaron. I live on Congress Street. I just want to speak and thank the city council for their leadership. I know this is a very civically engaged city. There's a lot of input and output coming in every day, but I do appreciate how the city council has tried to be transparent and accessible. And I wonder, why do we put the cost of this sort of model behavior that we believe in on the city councilors themselves? Why do we ask for so much sacrifice in order to be in leadership? I think there are ways we could support city councilors so that they do not have to juggle multiple jobs in order to be leaders. And I think as we're in budget season, looking at city council compensation would be a way to give people more maneuverability when you're dealing with like really difficult weeks. I also think there's a lot of people who support the city councilors directly, but they are not coming to apply for the 240 open positions at city council. So maybe if there was a way to get staff that directly supported, reported to city council, that could be a way to find new people wanting to work for the city. And I think that support could also be a way for city councilors not to feel so alone. I feel really bad whenever I think about the city council's email box. I don't send any emails, but I just, there's a lot of people, a lot of elected people get criticism, but they have someone checking their email for them. They're not reading it themselves. There's someone who screens it. And the fact that we have model behavior, but they have to take it from a garden hose or whatever, I don't know. I just think there are ways that we can ask the people of Portland to sacrifice some in order to support the city council and the leadership that I think we want future leaders to demonstrate as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We'll head back to Zoom and next is it Brody?
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Brody Wood, District 1. I, yeah, my comment is specifically meant for the white leaders present to hear. And, yeah, it's just like an urge and ask, demand to protect black leaders. And I, I, I want to ask us to, to be really honest, to try to be really honest about what harm is actually occurring when white supremacists in our city are terrorizing black folks? And what harm is actually occurring when white supremacists are targeting and harassing black folks? And to be really honest about, you know, if this escalates, what that could be? And to, to not, you know, to not let it get that, to not let it get that far? And so, um, yeah, I guess I'm just, I, I hope that, I hope that white Portland leadership will, um, yeah, will like make sure that white supremacists aren't comfortable in Portland and can't do what they're doing. And don't let that labor fall on black leaders. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we've got a speaker here in chambers.
Good evening. My name is Jason Shedlock. I live on Prospect Street in District 3. You probably imagine I'm here to speak on something else today, but I couldn't let this opportunity pass without extending my appreciation to councillor Pelletier. I'm not supposed to name councilors, but through the chair, to the councillor from District 2 for her words today. And as someone who works in the labor movement and who is, has the privilege of representing thousands of workers across the state, hundreds of workers across the city, I am humbled to say that we stand in solidarity with our people of color in Portland and in Maine and appreciate the courage, the continuous courage, the exhausting courage that it takes to speak out on, on these acts. I will also say that I was struck and somewhat disappointed. I represent workers for a living and I never miss the opportunity to thank workers for their work, often unsung heroes. And certainly workers from the city of Portland should be thanked, but I will say that I felt as though after the comments from the councillor from District 2, that those comments should have had some space to, to sit with, with folks. Instead, we're, we're touting what we're doing as a city. We have a lot more to do. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. And next, we go back to Zoom, Wes.
Hi, this is Wes Pelletier. I live in District 2. Calling it's part of to stand in solidarity with councillor Pelletier. I'm wondering why this isn't on the agenda? It seems like this is something that should be on the agenda. There are a lot of calls to speak on on agenda items and I know that if I was in an organization where one of the members was being harassed, I'd make sure to just put, put time on the agenda to talk about that. I think that it kind of speaks to our lack of leadership, to have a mayor where you have a councillor speak about how they've been harassed and then we get to listen to that mayor make excuses for completely botching yet another thing. One week after writing a letter of support for cops after cops lynched a black man. It is astounding to me the lack of leadership that we have on these fronts and it really needs to be addressed. I also would like to ask the other city councilors to learn to put things on the agenda. It's unreal that this is not on the agenda. You guys are in a body that has an agenda and you have meetings and you have the power to put important items on the agenda. So I would ask for people to learn how to operate in that body. I understand it's hard. I understand that the mayor is a former cop, is not interested in, in entertaining those notions, but that said, it's not your job to get on social media and chastise us for not stepping up. It's your job to step up and be leaders in this situation. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. And next, we've got somebody here in chambers.
Thank you. Peter McLaughlin, Central Ave, Peaks Island. I know I'm not supposed to address councilors directly, but I do want to say thank you, councillor Pelletier. You have been a real leader in your time on the council and have stood up for a lot of Portlanders who often feel like these halls of power do not speak for them. And I want to be sure that you know that many of us are, are behind you, whatever you need. And then if I may, I have not looked at the agenda. So may I speak on warming shelters briefly?
Uh, yes, you may. That's not on the agenda.
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to suggest particularly to the councilors on the Health and Human Services Committee to look into formalizing the process for, for how about, we go about planning warming shelters. I thank the city manager for her report and I thank all of the city staff who stepped up and did incredible work in, in a serious crisis this week to keep people safe. We know extreme weather is going nowhere and I think we need to figure out, we need to problem solve and figure out how we are going to protect people in, throughout this winter and every winter to come and figure out what resources are needed and, and what coalitions have to be built and what spaces and what contingency plans and how to have additional resources for the overtime needed and the experienced staff. Obviously, I recognize these are complex problems and, and to city managers' points, I, I do think city staff has at times been unduly criticized, but I think that comes from a public who fears, sometimes with justification, that the city's not going to step up and is not going to protect people. So I, I think it is, it is on the city council, the policy body to be thinking about policy here and how to develop a proper plan in conjunction with city staff. At what temperatures does this plan go into effect, et cetera, et cetera? And working with the experts that we have here in the social service world in Portland, organizers on the ground, and I, I think this is a problem that, that we can solve. We know how to, how to band together in, in, in the winter here in Maine. People do it for their neighbors and their families and I believe we can do it for a city. So I look to the committee to put this on an upcoming agenda and start working on it now so that we can be in a good place.
Thirty-second warning.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we'll head back to Zoom, Amelia.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Amelia Kelleher and I live in District 2. And I just want to acknowledge the testimony shared by councillor Pelletier, who has been and continues to be a very vocal advocate on many fronts and just reiterate what was shared today in support of that statement. And I really hope that fellow Portland members, residents like myself, fellow white Portland members, will hold city council accountable and make sure that there is action in response to what's been shared tonight and also giving space. And I think it's important to take the time and whether it's crafting a statement or an action plan to make sure that the right voices are at the table. I think we've heard several examples and seen examples recently of where that's not been true. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We've got somebody here in chambers with us.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Jocelyn Leighton. I use she, they pronouns and I'm here to speak in solidarity and to break the rules for councillor Pelletier. Thank you for speaking. And I think the rules need to be broken in a system that is rooted in white supremacy. And we know that white supremacy is a well-oiled machine. It's been going on for millennia. So to make a statement, thank you for making a statement and working hard on that and what is the action that we're going to take behind that statement? Because white supremacy does not sleep. It does not stop. It works 24 hours a day and everything that we do, regardless of who we are, where we are, it is here rooted in these systems. I'm on the city council in South Portland. I see it happening there every single day. When I bring it up, I hear people groan. I see eye rolls. I hear, you know, people are frustrated that I'm talking about racism in South Portland because for some reason, it doesn't exist there, but it absolutely does. It exists in Maine. It exists in the United States every which way that we look. So I, as well as, as councillor District 2 said, I saw an uprising of a lot of white people about three years ago, you know, crowding the streets, going to city council meetings, staying up until 1:00 AM, talking about the police budget, et cetera, et cetera. I don't see that now. We have a budget season coming up. We had a budget season last year. There was no one there to talk about how we might reform the police, how we might defund the police, how we might take allocations of their budget into social services, which is what I believe we should do. But it's looking at, these are all surface things, people coming out and it's amazing to go protest. I, this is not a shame on you. This is a, we cannot do surface level things and expect the roots of the system that we live in to change. We need to look at the roots of the system and that we are all integral parts of that root system. How do we change that? What are our actions actually going to be to protect this beautiful human being right here? To protect this beautiful human being over here, to protect us, to everybody. This, my skin is her skin in a way, like her skin, but it weighs heavily in this world. She can walk into the world and she is afraid to be in the world because people want to harm her based on that. I can be safe behind my white skin and I have that ability. I have that privilege. People of color do not have that oftentimes. How do we change that? And I'm not expecting everybody to change white supremacy of thousands of years, right here, right now, but we need to think about that.
Thirty-second warning.
That's the root of the system. Statements are great. Riots are great. Protest, not riots, sorry. Protests are great, pardon. Riots are, you know, they have their place, but we need to change the roots of things. That's what the problem is here. And I really implore the council, I implore the mayor to work with councilors here to do action to keep people safe 24 hours a day because white supremacy does not sleep and we need to keep people safe.
Thank you for your comment. And next, we'll go back to Zoom. Kelsey is next.
Hi there. My name is Kelsey Reardon. I live on 4th Street in District 1 and I would like to make a comment in support of councillor Pelletier as well. Apparently I'm also breaking a rule, but I'd specifically like to thank her for speaking up and continuing to speak up for herself and so many other people. To show such grace in the face of absolute terror is awe-inspiring and also wholly unfair to put on someone, even if they are a leader. They do not deserve to listen to hatred. And so one of the things that has come up in all of this is that her social media accounts are public because she is a public servant and that is a public information. However, the comments that she is receiving privately on that account is, when she reposts them, they're being taken down by Instagram and by Facebook as hate speech. So she's receiving hate speech on a public platform that she is required to keep public because of rules from the council? I don't understand that. So I have questions about that. I would implore you all to question that. What steps are being done to protect her from that hate speech that she is required to take? That's my understanding of it. So I would love a response of some kind and I implore all other white people, myself included, to continue to speak up when this is happening because this is not all right. It's also not her responsibility to be the one that's bringing this up. I agree. It should have been on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And next, we've got a speaker with us in chambers.
Hi, my name's Naomi Mayer. I'm District 3. And I'd like to thank you. I'd like to have as much courage as you do. But what I want to say is that for every white person in Portland, this of course is the world, but I want to talk to Portland because I live here and we're all trying to do something here. That horrible flag and those disgusting comments are all of us. And to think that it isn't is why we stay in the comfort that we sit in and we can't. And until this chamber and Portland does something about it, not, not the rhetoric, not everybody's standing up, then that flag, we all carried it. Those comments, we all wrote them. And to think otherwise is pure folly. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Over to Zoom, we have Michelle.
Hi, yes. My name is Michelle Soulier. I live in Parkside and have for many years and I work on Congress Street by Longfellow Square at the Greenhand Bookshop. I'm a small business owner and I sent an email earlier today as part of the public comment process and a lot of what I said has been reiterated already, so I won't repeat that. But I do want to say that if people think this is an isolated incident that was spurred by one man standing with a banner in Congress Square Park on the first day of Black History Month, they don't realize that there have been many of us in the neighborhood of Avon Street and Congress Street who have found ourselves pulling down flyers from white supremacists which have Hitler Youth-type imagery on them and destroying them so that the poison doesn't spread further. So this is not an isolated incident. This is just the latest symptom of an ongoing push from racists and white supremacists who are often operating undercover of night, but are clearly coming out in the daytime now. And I would very much like to think and to see this community pull together and let them know that this is not okay. It is not okay to have hate speech masquerading as free speech. Understand that the city council and city authorities have their hands tied by free speech and that is as it should be. Free speech is very important to protect. But these guys are learning how to navigate that in a way that allows them to exploit it and that is not okay. I want my friends and neighbors and family members and customers who are not white to be able to walk the streets without feeling like they're being threatened. That's really important to me in this community. And I think that if we pull together and acknowledge this is an issue, we can do something about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. We've got somebody here in chambers.
Hi, my name's Sydney Avitia. I live in District 3. I'm also here to talk about white supremacy in Portland. I really appreciate all the white people speaking out tonight and I also want to make sure that the city knows that just because most of the people who've given comments so far about this issue are white, doesn't mean that this is a fake problem. I think that I've seen a pattern of like the press herald and like other city leadership using this as a tactic to silence black leadership and saying that like, oh, like one black person got all the progressive white people riled up and that's not true. It's something that all people of color here feel and I'm really light-skinned and Chicano and the violence that I'm afraid of as I'm standing here and shaking a little bit is really different than the violence that my black neighbors are facing, but I'm still nervous to be here and, and putting my name out there. And that's a really huge region and there's not more people of color speaking out and not more people of color in city government. And I know, all of y'all know what I'm talking about. It's just harder to get in the door and you have to do more respectability politics and you have to do more. And it's just, even when we show up really, really hard, our voices don't get listened to the same. And I'm saying that as someone who's been coming here for years and applied to city boards and not gotten on them. And yeah, I wanted to point out that pattern of like narrative that I see because I think it takes away a lot of the truth and realness that like we are really afraid and like we're strong and we know how to deal with it, but like this is a real problem. And I also wanted to say that nice words have never changed reality or ended violence. And I want to point out the difference when city manager John Jennings was called a white supremacist, there was a press conference for him organized in the city within 24 hours. And when one of your other colleagues who's black is literally threatened with physical violence, there's nothing and it's been like five days or however long it's been. And so I think we just have to really ask like, is the city really colorblind? Is the city really committed to equity? If one of your colleagues gets accused of something that like historically he has a record of perpetuating and someone else gets like physically threatened and there's a different response, we have to look at that difference. And yeah, I just want to say like, words don't end white supremacy, actions and structural change does. And I really want that from all of you. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Okidok. We'll go to, you're next here in chambers.
Hi, everyone. My name is Elizabeth McCormack and I am just speaking tonight to say that councillor Pelletier and the Black, Brown and Indigenous people of Portland should not have to be brave. She should not have to be resilient and endure what the rest of us will never have to endure. She should not have to withstand hate speech to have her mental and physical health impacted week after week in doing this job and a job that I canvassed for her to do. And she deserves to be protected and to be safe and all the Black and Brown and Native people of Portland deserve that as well. So I'm here to stand in support of councillor Pelletier. I stand with her and the other councilors of color and I hope that we as a community can do so, so much better for them. What will we do to keep this happening, from happening again? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you, everybody who has come out for public comment this evening. I'll now close the public comment period. Oh, I'm sorry. There's one more person who just walked up in chambers. Hi.
Hi, I'm Katrin. District 5, by way of District 2, by way of East Bayside before that, because gentrification's the whole thing. So first, I just want to say to my family and my friend that I see you and I love you. And we're here because of you. We're here because you matter and your life matters. So that's part one. Part two, I just want to talk to my community. So hi, everybody. I feel like I'm sitting here in this position of power and this place and I'm watching us pledge allegiance to this state and I am just thinking about this complex place that we're in as a community and as a people. We know that this state was founded on the genocide of Native peoples in order to make money from the trade of enslaved people. And that's not like a general thing, like the Presum Scott River was literally dammed to drive the Abenaki people away from the Presum Scott River so that they could mine the trees to build ships for the Middle Passage, to profit off money of slavery, to build the state of Maine. So we're here in that history and we're holding that complex history. And so I think we have a choice to make. We can continue to pledge allegiance to that, which is what grew the white supremacy that we have all been seeing and experiencing here. This isn't an outlier that exists outside of Maine and comes in. It is actually the very fabric of the beinghood of this state. It is a natural implicit outgrowth of this state. So we, we really have to hold that in everything that we do and hold that positionality when we do anything. And I just want to ask that we can And I just want to ask that we continue to do that. And I know that it's difficult in this crazy, busy world to do that, but I think that truth is important and I think it's powerful. And the last thing that I want to say, the last group of people I want to address who I haven't heard addressed yet tonight, where are the cameras on Zoom? Like, can they, where do I look so that I can look at?
Right behind you.
Do they look at me here or do I have to turn around to look at them?
Yeah, if you.
So they can see me, but I want to look at them like that way. Okay. So I just want to talk to the white supremacists who are watching this. That's, that's really important to me. I want to say, yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll do it in 30 seconds. I want to say that your people don't stand with you. All of your people that you saw here tonight, all of your people that you're trying to call into your movement of white supremacy, we don't stand with you. We're standing somewhere else. So you can continue to fly your flag and you can continue to try, but we stand with her and we stand with every Black and Brown leader and child in this city. So you can continue to be afraid. You can continue to try to convince us that it's okay to be white, but your people don't stand with you. We stand with someone else. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Sorry about that. I just got kicked off Zoom. Back in. Uh, we've got another speaker here in chambers.
I get to go?
You are.
Cool. Um, hi, I'm Charlie. I live in District Two. Thank you for everyone who's spoken so far. I just wanted to provide a little context for those who might not be, um, so in the know about Richard Ward and, um, folks like him. He publicly states that he is, uh, not a racist. I don't think anyone in this room is, uh, fooled by that, but I, I just want to provide some context about the, uh, specific propaganda that he is disseminating. On Ward's Gab and Facebook, he often uses, um, White Lives Matter propaganda. And this is, uh, literally the same propaganda that uh, the recently recognized domestic terrorist group NSC 131, neo-Nazi group, uses. They pull from the same websites and Ward places this up on Cumberland Ave, on Congress and publishes it, uh, you know, on his social media. The, the rhetoric he uses is pulled directly from overtly fascist and neo-Nazi websites and, uh, popular profiles. And, you know, we can't take his word for this. He is, he is lying to us, obviously. And yeah, he is, he is targeting people individually. You know, we are all in this room for one of those instances, but he also targets, uh, local trans folks. And he is actively endangering people's lives and wellbeing. This has gone past, uh, free speech. This is hate speech. And he is making our city a less safe place. I don't know what the, what the, what the steps forward are with this, but, uh, you know, we, we can't keep allowing this to happen. He stands out there with, with literal fascist neo-Nazi signs. And, you know, as a city, this, this isn't what we stand for and we, we can't allow this to keep happening.
Thank you for your comment.